Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am Commissioner and Chair of the Board, Rick Vest, to my left Commissioner and Vice-Chair, Krista Yelkum, to her left Commissioner Matt Schulte, and to my right Commissioner Sean Flowerdy. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is claims. Two A, approval of the claims processed through October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I move approval of the claims.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims for goods and services beyond the ninety-day time period provided Nebraska revised statute twenty-three dash one thirty-five for Verizon Wireless VSAT dated, excuse me, Verizon Wireless VSAT North dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for a total of eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move approval of this claim.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item three, consent items. These are routine business items expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, right-of-way contracts with the following: Patricia E. Richmond Life Estate, Raymond Road, North One Hundred and Forty-first Street, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven dollars; Marymar Farms LLC, Agnew Road and North One Hundred and Sixty-second Street, in the amount of five hundred and ninety-five dollars; Michael A. Bundy, Agnew Road and North One Hundred and Sixty-second Street, in the total amount of four hundred and eighty-seven dollars; Lawrence K. and Gretchen S. Helmick, Northwest Twenty-seventh Street, West Branch Oak Road, in the amount of seven hundred and three dollars; B, a grant contract with Berkalow Education Solutions Team for the best alternative school program in the amount of ten thousand dollars; and C, receive and place and file the following quarterly reports for the county sheriff and the county attorney.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to new business. Item A, resolution in the matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County which have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve item four A. Please call the roll.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item new business, three B, resolution in the matter of instituting eminent domain proceedings against Stanley and Jody Bartles.
Good morning, Dalton, Lancaster County, right-of-way. These eminent domain proceedings are for the federally aided project Sawtilla Road. We started this back in February. We've gotten thirty-nine out of the forty-three tracks. These are the final three that we are trying to get to finish up the project, so.
So, should we do a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Dalton, so, this is a big project. Sawtilla Road's one that we've been working on very diligently.
The project's two point two eight miles long, starting from twenty-seventh, around twenty-seventh going up to seventieth.
Highly traveled road.
Yes, sir.
Important to the public.
Yep.
So, what I heard you say was forty-three right-of-way agreements needed to complete this project?
Yes.
And we've got thirty-nine of them signed?
Yeah, we have thirty-nine signed, and we have one go-to condemnation that we've finished, and then we got the final three, which is the one that we're talking about now, and the next two that'll be coming up.
Okay. Just take one minute, because you guys are very, we've been through this.
Yes, sir.
This is the last resort when we take action like this.
Yes.
We go through a long process to be equitable, but you also represent the entirety of Lancaster County when you're negotiating these deals, so.
Yes, we make every good faith attempt to try to come to an agreement. We work back and forth with the landowner trying to come to some type of resolution well before we institute eminent domain proceedings. We're trying to be fair to the taxpayer, the neighbors that we're working with, the people that come to an agreement at the very beginning. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be rewarding holding out till the very end. We're trying to be respectful to the taxpayer and everyone else along the project. And a lot of the people on Sawtilla really are looking forward to this because they understand how unsafe Sawtilla can be, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's been through a lot, yeah. All right, very good. That was my question. Commissioners, anything else for Dalton?
One.
Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three C, resolution in the matter of instituting eminent domain proceedings against Alan and Laurel Bade.
These would be the same project, so.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three D, resolution in the matter of instituting eminent domain proceedings against John and Michaela Erickson.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes, and thank you to everyone who's worked so hard to move this forward.
Three E, resolution in the matter authorizing county board chair to sign professional services agreement with right-of-way phasing services supplement to the Nebraska Department of Transportation for additional services.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. The project that we are referencing, Sawtilla Road, is shown on the exhibit on the overhead. This item and the item that precedes it pertain to this. So, you've just had Dalton from our office walk up and talk about eminent domain proceedings. These proceedings are very costly to the county, and so this is additional services associated with that.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three F, professional services agreement, right-of-way services supplement two to county contract C dash twenty-four dash zero-two-five-eight and C dash twenty-four dash zero-two-nine-six supplemental one with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for additional work outlined in exhibit A. The total cost to supplement two is not to exceed thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three G, resolution in the matter authorizing the county board chair to sign the responsible charge services agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for right-of-way acquisition appraisal and final design services related to federal aid project on the Arbor Road Bridge.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This item and the item that follows it pertain to the Arbor Road Bridge at approximately twenty-seventh and Arbor Road. This is a major structure. This is another federal aid bridge, and so we're at the point where we can acquire right-of-way for this, and we're pretty excited about it.
Good, I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three H, responsible charge services agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation to reimburse the county for right-of-way acquisition appraisal and final design services for a federal aid project on the Arbor Road Bridge. The total cost of this agreement is not to exceed fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three I, acceptance of a grant in the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars pursuant to the two thousand and twenty-four Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. So, this is a grant agreement that we've been working on for some time in our office and with the changes in administration. We didn't know, I mean, this program was kind of on and off again. We're super excited to have worked through all the components of the agreement. Safe Roads for All is really a program at doing planning on how to make your roads safer for the community. That is a big passion of mine. I actually was invited to Washington, D.C. last week to the National Academy of Engineering to talk about systemic road safety, and so I was the only county engineer present, which I think is a testament to how much I value safety on our roads. And so, we are excited to get this project, get this project started, and so we bring forth this agreement to you.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three J, right-of-entry and maintenance agreement with the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission to allow the county to install a new drainage culvert within the Branch Oak Lake State Recreation Area and Wildlife Management Area.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. I have put an exhibit of the plan sheet up on the overhead. You can note the areas of our right-of-way and our road. In the case of Nebraska Game and Parks, they don't like to give us easements. They want, they give us a right-of-entry and then would like us, of course, to maintain our facilities, and so that's why we're bringing this agreement forward.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three K, agreement with Gana Trucking to provide road maintenance during excavation of soil, sand, gravel, and property located at South Sixty-eighth Street and Sawtilla Road.
This item is simply to memorialize the agreement with Gana to take care of the gravel road where they have a borrow pit and are doing some work.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three L, setting the annual salary for Tyheem Pleasant, Chief Deputy Lancaster County Treasurer, in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just to set the salary for the same, for Ty as the same as what the previous chief deputy was making, and I have brought Ty along and to introduce to you all, and I will let him say a few words about himself.
All right. It's always fun talking in front of y'all. So, I wrote my notes down, so I'll be reading. Sorry, not a lot of eye contact. I'm excited to be a steward for the county that raised me. Being able to serve over three hundred thousand people that I care, care about excites me. I look forward to serving as a deputy county treasurer to help this county move forward in the future during my time. My primary goal is to be the best deputy to treasurer Rachel Garver I can be and take advantage of this opportunity in this moment in space and time. And a little bit about myself, I'm a father of three, a husband of one. I served my nation in the Air National, Nebraska Air National Guard from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen. I graduated from Concordia University in Nebraska with my bachelor's, and I got a master's from, from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and also got an opportunity to work in the University of Nebraska as a recruiter. Then after my time there, I'm in a realtor at Woods Brothers since then, and now I'm going to be transitioning to being the deputy county treasurer for this great lady right here.
That is one impressive resume. Very good. Well done, sir.
Ty, since the time that I met you as a new grad from Concordia, your commitment to the community has been very clear, and you always put a hundred percent of your energy and your, your talent towards whatever you do. I'm glad to move approval of this.
Second. Glad to have you on the team.
Yes, appreciate y'all.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Good to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to three M, a memorandum of understanding with EnviroTech Services LLC for corrosion inhibited liquid magnesium chloride. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed two hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three N, contract with TLC Dry Cleaners for laundering services for the Sheriff's Department and County Corrections. Cost to the county shall not exceed eight thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve item N. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four is reserved for executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for a strategy session regarding real estate transaction and legal advice and to protect the public interest at nine seventeen a.m.
Second.
Motion second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerdy?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.[713.99]